You ready, Jacob? Okay. It's five o'clock on Monday, May the 17th, and want to welcome everyone to the City Council meeting this evening. We'll call this meeting to order, and if everyone would like to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Mike.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Entertain a motion then to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mayor's desk, want to thank our videographer tonight, Colin Penton. And as you've probably heard, Kendall Powell, our chief of police, is retiring the end of June, and we certainly wish him well and thank him for all of his years of service in Algonah. At the end of June, then, Beau Miller, the assistant chief, will be appointed as an interim, and we will begin the hiring process, both asking for applications within the department and outside of the department. So we'll, we're seeking advisement from other communities as to the proper steps also. I do have a thank you from Don Bernhard with RSVP that I'd like to read. Dear City Council, on behalf of the RSVP volunteer program, thank you for the city of Algonah's support of $2,000. Even during the pandemic, RSVP continued to serve our communities in a variety of ways. Volunteers served the COVID call centers, worked in vaccine clinics, became virtual readers via Zoom with area school students, and sewed thousands of cloth face masks. The care team, food pantry, and exceptional treasures utilized RSVP volunteers. Spring 2021 found RSVP volunteers back, impacting literacy for third grade students as pen pals. So RSVP volunteers are inspired to serve. Your generous support helps keep, helps us keep 55 and older volunteers actively engaged in service to our communities. So thank you. And again, that's from Don Bernhard. And finally, I would just like to congratulate the senior class of Algonah High School, wish them well as they graduate this Sunday. So does the council have anything they would like to share tonight? Okay, hearing none. We'll move then to update from the city administrator.
Just one quick item tonight, a reminder that on May 21st, that's this Friday, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., One Block Estate Street from Thorington to Dodge will be closed. Council had approved that for a block party event here a couple of meetings ago, so just a reminder on that. A street closure coming up here on Friday.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to agenda item number seven then. This is the citizens' opportunity to address council with any items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here present that would like to speak? Seen no one. Is there anyone online, on the, on the phone?
He is indicating he wants to speak.
Okay. Hearing none, then we'll move to the consent agenda, which includes approving the minutes from the May 3rd council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve a cigarette permit for Wine and Spirit Shop of Algonah, approve a cigarette permit for the Chrome Truck Stop, approve the department reports, as well as the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move then to agenda item number nine, which is a public hearing. It is 5:05, and we'll open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment. Jacob.
This is a public hearing on the proposed budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. The hearing was set the last council meeting and published in the newspaper. We have not received any comments regarding the hearing notice.
Okay. No one on, on the phone either, so. No one present that would like to speak? Okay, so it's 5:06, and I'll go ahead then and close the public hearing for agenda item number nine. That moves us to agenda item number 10, which is also a public hearing. So it's 5:06, and I'll open that public hearing, and this is pertaining to the Teets Park Shelter House project.
So at the last council meeting, City Council approved going to bid on this project, as well as setting the public hearing on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the project. Right now, the timeline is that bids will be due June 3rd, and then hopefully we will on June 7th, at the next council meeting, be, be able to award a contract on that. The plans and specs have been posted on the city's website under RFP request, as well as posted all the plan rooms in accordance with the state's public bidding laws. The estimated cost on the project, if I can figure a way to zoom in here. Total estimated fee is between $296,184 and $361,209 is the range prepared by the architect. I will say that Andy did send a note to me here this later this week, or last week, and said that they've been seeing significant increases in price of materials. And so he said, we could quote, we could very likely see bids in the 350 to 475 range. They had, they've had some projects here just recently that have been significantly above where prices were just a few months ago. So, you know, depending on what we get for bids, council always has the right to reject all bids. But we're, we're hoping that the, the proposed building system that we have with the one-step masonry, you know, unlike steel and wood, that hasn't seen significant increases here in the last recent months, so we hope that will help. And then we're also, as we bid the project, would have a completion date of December 1. Typically, on a project like this, you know, on a timeline that we're currently bidding, would, would expect the project to be done much sooner than that. But just to make it attractive to bidders, we're putting that as a deadline so they have more flexibility, and we can hopefully entice more competitive bids. But we will, we'll know more next meeting.
Okay.
And we have not received any comments here at City Hall regarding the public hearing notice.
Okay. And Barb, there's no one on the phone for any comments, so. Okay, it's 5:09, so I'll go ahead then and close the public hearing then for agenda item number 10, which moves us to new business, is a resolution. Agenda item number 11 is a resolution approving the budget amendment.
So this approves the amendment that we just had the public hearing on. Just to highlight some of those changes in the budget, it's pretty typical for end of year to make adjustments as we're approaching. So the, a summary of what we've seen in the changes for the budget. Some of it was just correcting numbers that didn't match when we did the, the change in software last year when we crossed all that data over. Reflects the revenues received by the 2021A and 2021B bond series issued earlier this year. And then also reflects the additional revenue from the agreement with the hospital for transfer services on EMS, which when the, the previous budget was approved, that agreement was not yet in place. On the expense side of things, same thing, correcting some software issues, as well as including funds for the police radio repeaters, the sewer lining project that we had with HydroClean, as well as the higher-than-budgeted cost for the interceptor junction box project. And then also to more accurately reflect the ambulance wages benefits, supplies, which were much higher this year with COVID. And then the building renovation project, which is underway.
Motion to approve the resolution adopting the budget amendment for 2021.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 12 is a resolution regarding Central Park.
This resolution approves a grant agreement between the city and the Wellmark Foundation. As I mentioned, the work session, the city, we were thrilled to hear that we were awarded a grant application that we had submitted back in March to the Wellmark Foundation for $100,000 to go towards improvements to Central Park, focusing on the skate park, basketball court, sidewalk connections and improvements, and then related amenities. As part of that, the, the city needs to enter into a grant agreement with the Wellmark Foundation, just stipulating the use of those funds in the timeline for. So that's what this resolution does. The $100,000 are, if, if approved, would be received in September of 2021, and then the city would have until December of 2023 to, to use the funds, which would be more than enough time based on the various timelines we've discussed for that project.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution of the grant agreement with Wellmark for the $100,000, and thank the, the grant writers. It's awesome to get that.
Second.
We have a motion by, from Rodney, and a second from Don. Is there any other discussion?
Just the question, is this the time when we start questioning how much things are going to continue to go up? I mean, we're looking two years away to have this done. Things could escalate to a price to where we probably want to underprice this a little, unless things change.
So I guess in terms of the, the grant timeline, the, the next agenda item, we still think it's feasible to do the design build yet this calendar year. But we'd also talked about maybe doing the demo this year and design, you know, and building next year, just depending on lead times with contractors, things like that. But, you know, based on the grant agreement, we, we'd get basically three different shots of construction seasons potentially that if we did want to delay this year, we'd have that flexibility. And turn, you know, because, yeah, December 31st, 2023 is when the project needs to be done.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 13 is another resolution pertaining to Central Park.
This resolution approves a proposed, for proposal from Boltland Mink Engineering for design and construction administrative services for the Central Park project, with Spawn Ranch being a partner on the project in, with Boltland Mink in doing the skate park design. The proposal would be based on an hourly basis of actuals, but has a total estimated cost of $38,200, ranging from the topo survey, project design and coordination, construction documentation, bidding, and then construction services.
Maybe my question should have been, this WHKS, they are probably the ones who have to keep in mind cost inflation and making sure they come back to us with reasonable expectations. Anyway, I'd move to approve that.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley, a second from Don. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don. Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 14 is a resolution related to the wastewater treatment facility.
So the secondary wet well down there, we discussed during budgeting and capital planning, needs some significant work with failing concrete, as, as well as a number of valves and pipes updated. We have funds budgeted for that improvement, as well as the engineering in the upcoming fiscal year's budget. So this resolution approves a professional services agreement with WHKS for the design and bidding and construction administrative services for that project. The project cost is a lump sum fee of $28,000. I will note that's a little bit higher than what we had anticipated on this project, but it's in sync with the preliminary design work they're going to be doing, and that number's lower. They just had to slide some of that work, so when they do this improvement, their, some of that design work has to be done first to make sure it's right size for the preliminary plant. So overall, between the two, we're a little lower than what we expected, but this one's slightly higher for that reason.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley and a second from Rodney. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 15 is a resolution also related to the wastewater treatment facility.
This is for a professional services agreement with WHKS for the preliminary design of the upcoming plant upgrade to meet nutrient reduction requirements. The design will cover about 30% of the total design for the project in all. The estimated fee is $135,000. That would be billed on an hourly basis for actuals and would be completed in the fiscal year FY 2022. And then following that, in '23, we'd have the final design with the construction beginning in '24.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion for Rodney, a second from Jody. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 16 is a resolution pertaining to South Moore Street and Snap-on Drive improvements.
Now that the project contract that has been awarded to Reading to Gravel and Excavating, on the design side of things with Boltland Mink, we're set to amend the current agreement we have this with them to add the construction administrative services. So this would be for the Moore Street reconstruction, Snap-on Drive construction, the related utility improvements, and then that first phase of the industrial park project is in, will be billed on an hourly basis, but the total estimated cost for construction services is $219,500.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve resolution number 16. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution also involving Moore Street and Snap-on Drive.
This is for a geotechnical material testing and inspection agreement with Chosen Valley Testing, Inc. for the Moore Snap-on Industrial Park project. Recommend partnering with them on this project to do that testing as they did the initial cores and testing for the preliminary design of the project, as well as is the group doing the North Main material testing.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 18 is a resolution in regards to the mill and overlay projects in town.
For the, the 2021 street improvement project, we're calling it, but yes, it's the mill and overlay. This resolution approves the ordering of bids and sets a public hearing on the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. The proposed hearing is, would be on June 7th before awarding bids, and as proposed, the bids would be due June 2nd, or excuse me, bid opening would be June 2nd, and then awarding on June 7th. If this is approved tonight, it will go to bidding tomorrow. Just one item of note on the cost estimate. When we had talked on this project, previously, we were looking at that $800,000, $850,000 range. Right now, the current total estimated project cost is $1,001,300. Just one of the primary reasons for that increase is on a block of Wooster Street, more or less have to replace all the curb. The bad news is it's going to cost more. The good news is that the grade is such that we can actually replace the curb and do mill and overlay and not have to do a full-on reconstruction, which is kind of the exception. And then there's a number of areas that, as we got deeper into design, need, you know, a full patch and not just an overlay of actually going down to that, that sub base. So that, that's the, the reason that we've seen some of the costs go up. In terms of staff, our recommendation is to, to still proceed with the project as proposed. As this is part of a, a two-year mill and overlay strategy that we were looking at, you know, about $2.5 million from that 2021A bond series, and then supplementing that potentially as well with lost funds. So this would still give us, you know, if this number's right, a million and a half next year out of the bond proceeds, plus loss to, to keep doing this project.
So we should get all of our blocks fixed, that, that was our, our goal, the next couple of years, even with this increase.
Say that.
All of the, the blocks, the streets that we had recognized needed improvement. Even with this increase, we'll still be able to make those improvements in those number of blocks.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So you're saying that we're going to approve all the streets with that budget? Oh, no.
Well, give us time. We're working on that.
Not in two years.
Motion to approve resolution.
I second. This is Don.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number 19 is a resolution authorizing a release of a mortgage.
Jim and Deb Fisher had a, a mortgage through the city's housing loan program. They've since paid that mortgage off in full, and our, our standard practice is then to get a, a resolution from council authorizing the release of that mortgage.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Tyler. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried, and congratulations to the Fishers. Agenda item number 20 is, is a request for street closures for Founder's Day.
I believe that everyone has a copy of the requested street closures for Founder's Day, so. Any questions from anybody regarding the activities and events that justify those street closures?
Maybe you just might want to outline a little bit how things are being rearranged this year from past.
Sure, I'd be happy to. We, as everyone probably is aware, did not have a Founder's Day celebration last year due to COVID, so we're excited to be planning activities again, and we're looking at Friday, July 9th. We are going to have the first event will be a car show, which will take place from Harlan on Down State Street. And then during that event, we'll have Mojo Productions providing some music. After the car show is over, then we are moving into the Dune Pianos, which will be on the stage mobile, which will be parked in between Algonah Hearing Center and Security State Bank facing east, and they'll perform from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then on Saturday, we have the Kids Bash Event, which is sponsored by the Algonah Ambassadors. Those activities will take place in the Chamber Block. Probably from the corner, depending on how many different groups and stuff we get involved, it may go all the way down to Dodge. We also are working on the barbecue showdown again this year, which will be on South Dodge Street. And then the bags tournament, which is going to be in the block between Dodge and Thorington. And we have, again, Mojo Productions will be playing during the, throughout the afternoon for that. We'll wrap things up after the barbecue showdown sampling. We'll present awards, and then our activities, at least on, on the streets that are in question, will be done. Just trying to.
Saturday, what time?
Probably 8:00 o'clock. The sampling goes from 5:30 to 7:00. And then it takes a, a little while to compile the results of the public's voting on the, the barbecue sampling. And then we'll present the awards and hopefully be wrapped up by 8:00 o'clock. But we're just trying to find a way to try something different. Very small crowd at the Beer Garden and the, the street dance in 2019. We knew we wanted to do something different so that we didn't incur, incur loss, and we're, we're checking out different entertainment with the Dune Pianos and the Mojo Productions. So hopefully, everyone will get out and support the celebration and enjoy all the class reunions, all the family reunions that are happening during this weekend.
Okay, so during the, the dance on Friday, there's going to be a beer garden on that one street that'll be taken care of by the two bars there?
Yep, I think those are the, the next, that's the next item on your, on your agenda.
And then how about on Saturday?
Same thing.
Okay, good. Because I know in the past during the bags, there have been, I mean, people like to drink beer when they throw bags.
Exactly.
It balances them out, I think. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that was done proper this year, so.
That's, that's what our plan is, yes.
Okay.
I just want to thank the committee for all their work. This is an exciting opportunity we didn't get to do last year.
I know, it's exciting to be back planning things again.
Back to planning it, so. I would make a motion, we approve the street closures for Founder's Day, July 9th and 10th.
I'll second.
Let's go. One question for clarification. For Friday night, do we need to only close part of the street, or close the entire street for Northwest?
Rick, I think, has an update on that.
All of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the, the map, the first map showing.
Only shows half of it.
Yeah, so it would just be.
It only shows half of that.
At 5:00, the entire.
There was an update after the maps were prepared and presented to you in your packets.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion from Rodney and a second from Don.
Tyler.
Tyler.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Tyler, okay. Vote, please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley. Harley.
Yes.
Come and have fun.
Yes, please, thank you.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item twenty-one, then, is a request for outdoor service area for Founder's Day. Like, someone like to come up and speak on that, or?
Trying to just make sure I know where everything is.
Ryan, just introduce yourself when you get up there, so that the.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Ryan Henderson, working with Doug Pepe. We are proposing to split the Beer Garden essentially down the center of the street, so that both of our liquor licenses are valid to provide beverages for the Founder's Day celebration, starting Friday evening, I suppose, when the, when the band comes on, or when the car show starts, so that people can move up and down the street with their drink of choice. And then Saturday morning again for the bags tournament and through the barbecue competition. So, we've outlined kind of a diagram of where the liquor license would be extended to, and then that would all conclude on. And get Moore Street, okay. Yeah, it would conclude on Saturday night at eight o'clock.
So, are you proposing the Class C liquor license to expand the service area, then? So, it'd be liquor, just beer and wine?
The entire license.
Okay. So, we had had conversations with the state that for the Class C, if there are going to be the, the beer and wine, you could overlap into other license, or areas of the Class C, there'd have to be some sort of delineator between the two licenses?
Yeah, so how did we?
So, because we were just talking on the Class C, if the, if there are budding, that there'd have to be a delineator between the two?
That they can't take liquor from one to the other. Is that what you're asking?
I guess yes, and then, just, yeah, what, what, what understanding is in terms of how that would have to be, they can't take liquor into the other one, there, there'd be some sort of, I understand, it either have to be, to, to walk across the street, either side, either it'd have to be under one license, or not include the liquor and just do Class B beer and wine, and then that could go in and out. Am I explaining that correctly?
Yes.
That's not the license that we have, we have Class C licenses that are formal alcohol.
Okay.
Right, but the thing is, is the.
The boundary, I understand the boundaries.
When you move them outside, you have to have a fence dividing the two. So, what you're proposing here is there's going to be a fence straight down State Street.
There doesn't have to be a physical barrier, is my understanding.
That's my understanding. Because you can't cross back and forth, beer's fine, it's a hard liquor, you can't cross back and forth between the two territories.
I guess I've never read anything that said there had to be a physical barrier. I'd like to see that, I guess.
Well, I'm all for this, but I think we need to get that ironed out as far as, you know, what, what we could do here, so I don't know how we could proceed, and we really don't have to proceed yet tonight, do we?
No.
It's kind of, it's kind of hard from the, all the laws have been changing, and this COVID issue and everything like that.
Yeah.
There is some really hard to understand areas on these things, but if you, we're going to try and make it work, because obviously, the last thing that we tried was not working. The party behind the parking lot, and part was because people weren't happy with the selection of the beverages that were available. Not everybody drinks beer, not everybody drinks wine, we can find a way to make it work, great, you know, some sort of boundary, but I don't, we need some help in figuring that out. Isn't it based on packaging of it? Because, I mean, you can get to go, liquor. You get to go, right? There's packaging to go? That was probably partly true, because last year during COVID, Governor. Well, like, send that, right?
Yeah.
So, we think there's a way, we could package it correctly, might be able to go anywhere in that idea.
But package.
Why not say, maybe on that?
Package to go was not for immediate consumption, it was to take it to go, to take it home.
Are you sure it's just to take it home? I don't think it's. It's had to be sealed.
Well, okay.
What happens after that is up to the.
I, I, my suggestion, the easy way around this, is you guys take turns, this year, one of you gets a Class C liquor license for the area, and the other one serves the beer and stuff for outside consumption, then next year, you flip it, and the other one gets the Class C, then you don't have to have that barrier.
I think that's going to create a problem with people getting and taking, I mean, you can't stop someone from going into, perhaps, or Billy Joe's from getting and taking it out there. I mean, that was part of the problem with having the Beer Garden in the parking lot, is everybody wanted to come in the bar because they didn't like.
Right.
What was served out back, and then there was a, walking across the alley became an issue.
Would an option be that in front of each of your establishments, you could have a, a fenced off or roped off area that, you know, liquor would be allowed, and then outside of that area would just be general wine and beer?
Could potentially work, but I think that with this new movement onto Main Street, I think we're trying to get away from the fencing people in, make it a more friendly event, people get scared of being in a fence and corralled. I'd be happy to look in and do some research about the fence thing, but I didn't realize that there was a, a physical barrier issue when it came to the difference between alcohol and, or beer and alcohol, because there's not a difference on my license and what I pay, I mean, the liability insurance is going to cover the entire area, so I don't know why there would have to be a barrier between the two. I understand there's, there has to be a barrier between the licenses, and technically, people shouldn't cross that barrier, but it's all enclosed in this street party downstairs, downtown, and I think that we could get along for a night and.
I think maybe it's just going to be a call down to the Iowa Beverages and see what they say. I, like I told Jacob, I haven't dealt with this in probably four years, on the physical barrier, it used to be that way, they could have changed their laws, but maybe we just need to make a phone call down to Duane and get their opinion of what we need to do and how we can do it.
Well, when, when we had that phone call, it was, needed discernible barrier, discernible was the word they used, sign or something where the dividing line is, since if it's, you got Class Cs abutting, liquor can't go across areas, but beer and wine can cross over just fine, so it'd be a way to notify people that you can't take liquor beyond this line.
I'm sure a sign down the center of the street would be fine, notifying that this is my liquor license and that it is liquor license. I mean, whether or not people abide by that, I think, kind of falls upon themselves, or I mean, there comes a point with, with this thing going on downtown, that, I don't want to break the law, that's not what I'm asking, but it seems kind of a fickle thing to have a line down the street.
Well, it is the difference between the exact wording of the law and the intent of the law, you're talking about the intent, yeah, what's the difference, but if it's worded a certain, certain way, we probably need to abide by.
I'm sure it comes down to the liability factor, if someone falls and gets hurt on my property, it's mine and not his. I'm sure that's what it comes down to ultimately.
So, anyway, I'd say I support you, but probably need to come back with this, we have more details, so we can put it together more precisely.
I think by showing that the closure of the street, we show we support this, I just, yeah, I don't know what the exact verbiage is either, and I'm, I'm just thinking, why doesn't it work either, as long as you don't go out past the street closures, you know? You know, obviously, nothing can go past that, but.
If, say, we were comfortable with that, however that dividing line came about, then, you know, the next conversation would be, you know, in terms of where that is, do we want to keep it on State Street, do we want to, you know, approve to expand the entire area as proposed?
I don't know, I think brews and barbecue really go together.
Yeah, I would think for Saturday, it's going to have to be some approved down there, too. I mean, you'd have, and I know the car show is planning to use, what, half of those streets possibly on a Friday night, too, expecting a hundred cars or so. I know that's going to be difficult to park them all unless we use half of some of the side streets, up to the alleys or whatever. So, I know that's always been the part we've got to figure out, I think, when we talked about this last year, and it didn't happen because of COVID, but that was still a question we didn't have an answer for, and I don't know if we do yet or not. So, the other alternative would be to form a corporation between me and Doug and make a different liquor license out of it, but it incurs a lot more expenses that way.
Yeah.
Understand that.
Well, see what we can figure out and come back and we'll get her done.
Okay. Is there any more debate or questions about any of it, or do we just need to have a finite description of our liquor, what?
So, is if, if the, if the state comes back and says, no, you need a really, you know, a hard barrier of between that difference, or if, you know, as long as there's a sign and you trust people not to cross that line with the product, if that's acceptable, you know, I guess, you know, it's what, what the council feels comfortable with.
Well, I can say I feel comfortable with being able to get by, I mean, if the state, if it doesn't have to be discernible, I'd be comfortable, I want to see a celebration atmosphere, so I can say that, I just think the community would look for that, for that meeting, and those, that event, so, I don't want to break any laws, but I know I'd like to see us be able to. Is there any other concerns about having?
Nope.
Anybody has their questions, or?
No, I figure the sign is probably going to be the bare minimum by the state, and that's probably more liability.
See if that works.
Yeah, I appreciate you both working together and, and extending your license to make it work, hopefully.
So, you know, options are, you know, you could approve as presented, subject to confirmation that this is fine by the state, just give your general indication, yeah, yep, this looks good, we just need to figure out these details, and we'll do formal approval at the next meeting, you know, or some other version, or, yeah, we just, we just table and address it next.
Well, I mean, if we can approve it as is, you know, once, you know, prior, once we get authorization from the state, I'm fine with that, and we don't have to come back and redo the whole thing at that point, or if they're not, then we're going to have to anyway, I guess. I don't know.
I don't know if there's any reason to approve anything at this point, I mean, I think we verbally let each other know that, yeah, we're for this, so let's just do the official approval next time when we know what we're doing for sure.
I agree with that, we have time, I mean, I don't want to make you come back again, but, you know.
So, yeah, you know, kind of give predictability for the owners and the Founder's Day committee that can talk about, yeah, this is the plan in terms of the promotion, and then we'll just figure out the final details for formal approval next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's, that's where you want to go?
Yeah.
Thanks for your all thoughts tonight, Ryan. Okay, I think I'm on the next thing, too. Oh, are you?
So, with this, do we need, do we need a, a motion then to table?
Yeah.
Okay, I was going to say it, okay.
Yeah, I'll move to table, Ken.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this, is there any other discussion? Vote please Deb.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried, that one's tabled, so we'll move then to agenda item number twenty-two, and this is a request for outdoor service area from Billy Joe's.
For the block party on Friday.
On May twenty-first.
Yes, from two to six.
Two to six.
I'm not going to be setting up a full bar outside or nothing at two in the afternoon on Friday, it's just going to be, I think I'm going to make some frozen drinks outside, and if people want to go down and shop with them and have the, I think Soma has their equipment outside, going to be doing demonstrations and stuff, and that's how this all arose.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless there's Soma, yeah.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Jody, a second from Rodney, is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please Deb.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Number twenty-three, then, concerns an outdoor seating area.
Kelly Tigges, the owner of The Market, has requested to install the four tables on the sidewalk there along the west edge of her property again this year. She had done it twenty nineteen, last year didn't do it because of COVID, but would like to do it again this year. Only concern that we expressed to her, and as she's proposed, is fine, is just with the planters there, that minimum four foot's maintained for eighty-eight purposes.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Don, to approve an outdoor seating area for The Market, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please Deb.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, that'll be a nice asset, I know, a couple of years ago, we sat out there and had coffee one time, so. Agenda item number twenty-four, then, deals with fireworks sales permit.
This is a permit for the sale of communit, consumer fireworks from Iowa Fireworks Company, proposed to set up at the Chrome Truck Stop, their application appears to be in compliance with the, the state and city ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Rodney, is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please Deb.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twenty-five is a change order for North Main Street Reconstruction Project.
Do you want to talk on this one, since it's kind of a technical item?
Yeah, yeah.
You, you want to come up to the podium, thank you, and identify yourself, that way then, in the audience on, on the video can, can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, yeah, change order one is dealing with a sanitary sewer drop manhole that was needed on the construction project, we discovered it during the review of the shop drawings from the contractor, so in order to get the sanitary sewer manhole constructed, we need to construct the drops, so this cost is to construct the drop, the drop manhole in full, with all labor and materials associated with the construction.
Is it just an oversight that this wasn't, or didn't you know until you got down to it, or?
We found it in, in review of the shop drawings, so the, the contractor submitted their manhole design, and then we approved those, so this is where we determined that it needed to be a drop manhole, the main came into the manhole higher than we had anticipated, so, if you can see in the detail there, the main that runs down the, the side street is substantially higher than the inverted of the manhole, so we needed to construct that drop in order for the sanitary sewer flow to not be just water falling into the manhole, so this is standard construction to construct a drop, anything more than two feet difference between the bottom of the manhole and the side street pipe.
So, that's kind of needed.
Yes.
And this is the only one in the whole project that we have to fix?
Yes, so this was, we, as, with the DOT contract, we can't add items without a change order, so we have to have the formal change order process for the DOT to approve, along with the city council and the city and the engineering staff.
Move to approve.
Second.
Here we have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please Deb.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twenty-six involves a pay app.
This is the second pay application from Bob Becker Construction for the EMS renovation project, the amount recommended for payment from the architect is forty-three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cents, the project is more or less substantially complete, we've got a walkthrough with the architect on Thursday, so after this pay application, the balance to finish is only the retainage, which is five thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and five cents for the Bob Becker portion of it, we also had some work on the radios, electronic specialties did, as well as. We also had some work on the radios, electronic specialties did, as well as some sprinklers installed, which was a separate contract, so.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion from Don and a second from Rodney. Is there any discussion? Hearing non-vote, please, Deb.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
So they're going to do walkthroughs on their next French toast day, or is it a busy place?
See, that would be, I imagine we'll probably want something that at some point, whether, yeah, to give folks a peek inside. At the same time, since it is staff 24/7, there is someone always living there. I know they're very anxious to not be living in a, next to a construction zone.
Sure. May not be able to open all the doors, Harley, just.
Yeah.
But that's probably a good, good time to do it, so. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number 27, and that also involves a pay app, though, this one to the library.
This is pay application number five from Henkel Construction for the, the library project. This pay application is the amount of $202,881.89. The balance to finish, including the change orders, is $693,072.10. I, I will note, since we did have substantial completion scheduled for, for May 14th of where we're at in terms of projects to, still to be completed, the big ones being the final flooring and carpet, the final installation of the windows and doors, and then the tiles for the entryway, the ceiling, and some additional tile and flooring work, and then the mechanical. And that item is a, just, we're on a backorder type thing that I think we should be getting later this month, but it's supposed to come like back in January. So we're about four weeks behind where we, we had hoped to be. We don't think it'll impact our, our planned opening day at this point, but did just want to note the status of where we're at, since, like I said, we did, we did miss substantial completion. But the, the, what's in the pay application is work that has all been performed, and the architects reviewed and recommends payment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tyler?
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing non-vote, please, Deb.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 28 is approving a change order for the library.
So this change order adds three sensors to three existing doors, which will stay, that did not, were not included to have the sensor that will feed into the rest of the system to indicate if a door is ajar or if it's closed. So it adds those, the, the equipment and installation of those, as well as the door just south of where the fireplace will be, kind of on that, that northeast, or that southeast corner of the property. That door's in really rough shape. We had looked at, does that need to be replaced? Originally, nothing was planned for it, but with the primings, you know, cut some patching, sanding, and then adding a kick plate, I think that's a more cost effective way rather than replacing the door. So it includes that as well. So the total amount of the change order is $1,055.16.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Rodney. Approve this change order. Is there any discussion? Hearing non-vote, please, Deb.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 29 is a second notification of future appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Nicole Burdis had resigned. I believe I read her resignation letter last meeting. So we have a position eligible for appointment at the June 7th council meeting, but just wondered if anyone had a name they would like to share and recommend tonight for us to act upon next time.
I will recommend Brandy Deers for P&amp;Z.
Okay. Okay, very good. And agenda item number 30 is a notification of future appointment for the Airport Zoning Commission. Nick Deers was on that, but he has been hired as our new recreation manager. So that's a position we need to fill as well.